Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30 on Tuesday, February 14th, 2023. Happy Valentine's Day. And you are at a common council meeting for the City of Wausau. Welcome, everyone. The first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
We choose to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, domination under God and individual liberty and justice.
All right. Next up is roll call. Please sign in. Keeps telling me I'm absent.
We have 11 members present.
Thank you very much. Next up, a public comment. Citizens preregistered for matters appearing on the agenda. Another public comment. It looks like we have Dennis, I'm sorry, Wolowski. You're welcome to approach the podium for your comments.
Forgive me, I'm a little out of breath. I was running in the rain. Last Tuesday, January 17th, there was a public hearing in the matter of rezoning of 1600 Golf Club Road. And myself and my neighboring property owners up there expressed several concerns and objections to this project. And I guess it was called a hearing, but it appeared that nobody was listening except for one person that suggested that we not rezone the property. However, after that, there was a motion that was passed. And there was a vote on the matter, and he voted to go ahead and proceed with this rezoning anyway. And frankly, we met outside later on after that, myself and my other property owners that are neighboring to this property. We were all quite shocked at the whole proceeding, and we're quite angered by the proceedings because it appeared that absolutely no one was listening to us. There were several concerns that were expressed, the biggest of which were devaluing of our properties if this zoning goes through, increased traffic in the area, increased noise in the area, degradation of the appearance of the neighborhood, and the moving in and out of families. Now, I thought the purpose of rezoning or purpose of zoning is to protect the integrity of a neighborhood and the structures that are erected there. And I would have to ask you, is it fair that after owning these properties, myself and my neighbors, for 40, 50 years and paying taxes all that time, that we would now take second place to one individual who has a for-profit motive? And it just doesn't seem right. It doesn't seem fair. You know, if Mr. Framke wanted to build a duplex, why doesn't he build one in an area that's already zoned for that type of construction? Instead of disrupting the privacy and seclusion of our neighborhood? And I also thought that elected representatives were supposed to represent their communities. It seems that up to now, the profit motives of one individual seem to be more important than the wishes of six neighboring property owners. I ask you all, how would you feel if someone wanted to disrupt your neighborhood by erecting a multifamily dwelling next to you? I beg you consider the wishes of the long-term neighboring property owners who, like I said, have owned these properties and have been paying taxes for as many as 50 years. So please do not allow this rezoning to take place.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? All right. We are now moving on to our consent agenda. That's items number 231101 through items number 170512. I have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Watson. Any discussion? I am not seeing any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Next up, we are on file number 210706. It's a resolution from the Executive Committee approving and adopting the City of Wausau's five-year strategic plan 2022 through 2027. What are the wishes of this body? I have a motion by Alder Lukens and a second by Alder Martins. Any discussion? Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are some elements of the plan that mention sustainability. And last term, the council had, in a collaborative effort, arrived at a resolution supporting environmental justice. And while there is some overlap, there are also some distinct components of each. And as a safeguard and protection for our citizens, I think it would be positive if, along with some of the sustainability language, we could add a commitment to environmental justice principles. And one potential relevant section may be, I believe it's on page 101, pardon me, let me find that one moment, page 102 of the packet PDF under objectives. It's under the public service section. The way that the plan is kind of segmented, that seems like it may be an appropriate place, such as item number four, invest in solutions and implement processes to ensure environmental sustainability. And then my recommended language, just something to the effect of, and commitment to environmental justice principles there. And the last would be under the performance measures, the last bullet point, identify sustainability. Perhaps we could add something like identify sustainability and environmental justice goals and develop a plan to achieve them. And really, just minor adjustments to kind of pull in some of the work the body had done the last term. And I think that had been, I hope and I think, a collaborative effort where everyone had come to a place where they were comfortable and could participate. So that would be my, I guess, one suggestion. And in terms of the language or the exact spot, I'm really open to any suggestions from the body or the mayor, the chair. Really, just the incorporation of it somewhere would be positive. Thank you.
Sure. I think that sounds eminently doable and appropriate. At this point, do you think we should offer that as an amendment? Okay. So if you're offering it as an amendment, I guess I'll understand that the amendment is to incorporate a commitment to environmental justice in our objectives, and then also in our performance measures to include environmental justice as a goal and developing those plans to achieve the, if that sounds good to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion by Alder Killian. Is there a second?
Can you press your amend button, please? Thanks.
Oh, yeah. All righty. Okay. And then we have a second by Alder Larson. Is there any discussion on this amendment? I saw Alder Denny, you have requested to speak. If you'd like to speak on this, or we can just hold off until after we vote on the amendment, it's up to you.
Sure. I think, I guess it does relate to the amendment. If we're going to make an amendment and potentially more amendments, would it make more sense to, you had posted the butcher block or butcher board from the retreat that we did, and we came up with a list of goals for the committee? If we're going to do another one of those midterm, I thought we were potentially going to do, would it make sense for this body to digest this entire packet? Or this, it's been three years in the making, and this is essentially the first time we've, as a body, looked at it or put much time into it, maybe is a better word. That would be my suggestion.
So you're asking for a meeting of this body, like another workshop, potentially?
Correct. There's a lot of things in here. There's a lot of objectives. There's a lot of measurements, performance measurements, that all got started in the prior council. So we actually haven't chopped off on this in detail, and maybe we could fine tune it more in line with what some of the members here would like.
Okay. So I appreciate that comment. I think, at least as far as I'm concerned with this, is that this is a living document. It's not something that just sits out there and doesn't do anything. My thought is that it would be part of our discussions at committee levels. As Alder Killian mentioned, there's some commitment to environmental justice we'd like to incorporate, since we've done that as a body in the previous council session. So if that, maybe the idea of using it at the committee level, the goals and objectives and performance measures as it relates to each committee, revisit that, but then also as a whole, have another workshop, does that meet your need?
Sure. It was, you had put up the butcher block, so that kind of triggered the thought that we had had these discussions, not necessarily with the intention that it was contributing to the strategic plan. So if we circle back on that midterm, we could tune that up a little bit.
Yeah, that sounds good. I will tell you, after our workshop, I brought that information to Barry Dunn, and they made sure that those sentiments were incorporated in it here. Now, some of it's a little broader, I think, than the specifics we had noted, but yes, I think that's a good idea. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I also like the finished product of this plan. I think we're fine to put in an amendment because environmental justice is already an approved concept that we have all signed on to. I do think, though, that we want to be cautious about having it be precise and, you know, exactly mirror our brainstorm list that we take from our retreat, whether we have that retreat once or twice in a term. I think that we would use that strategic plan as an outline or as a guidepost to guide those discussions, because they can, I think the two can exist separately and work together. I think the council's priorities, which is what that punch list is really, where we pick two or three issues that we really want to impact, knowing that we have two years to accomplish something, I think that can exist separately and work with a strategic plan without being incorporated in it. I guess the concepts should be more general in the plan, and we should use those visioning sessions or those priority-setting sessions to, like, do the drill down into them, but I don't think the one needs to necessarily include the other. I think we're on good footing with what we have.
Thank you. Okay. I just wanted, before I call on you, Alder Watson, I see from Alder Herbst that there's a motion to amend. Did you intend to do that? Okay. That was it. Okay. Alder Watson.
And I guess I would rather speak on just the general strategic plan and not the amendment.
All right. Well, then, if we're ready to vote on the amendment, I think we can do that right now.
You may begin voting. Motion to amend passes 11 to 0.
Nice. Okay. So now we are on the strategic plan as amended. Alder Watson.
So I guess I just really want to see this plan adopted by our council. It's just been a long time coming, and I think it has all the goals and outcomes that, I mean, the staff, the community, you know, Alders. I mean, we've had a lot of feedback into this, and I just really like to start measuring things. Like, we have a lot of goals, and I want it to be transparent with the community. And if we can get this going, then we can start looking at these performance measures and seeing where we can improve. So I really would love to see this pass.
Great. Any further comment, questions, needs? There are a few, since I've been living this thing, there are a few typos in here that I'm going to have corrected as well. Maybe nobody else noticed. All right. I think we're ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 1.
All right. Thank you very much. We're moving on. Item number 230210, this is an ordinance from the Plan Commission, rezoning 1600 Golf Club Road from a single-family residential zoning district to a two-flat residential zoning district. I would entertain a motion to get this discussion going. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Henke. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I guess I read the minutes of the Plan Commission. They were not super detailed, but, you know, I guess I struggle a little bit with how this duplex is so detrimental to a neighborhood, because it is essentially a twin home. It's a two-family home. It's not an eight-unit apartment building. It's not an apartment complex where it's a huge development that comes with 20 cars. So, you know, if it were those things, I could completely understand the opposition to it. But the idea that a home that looks like a house, that fits in our neighborhood, that just houses two families, I guess I struggle with why that is such a negative. So, I mean, I wasn't at the Plan Commission hearing, but I would welcome some feedback from our representative who sits on the Plan Commission or the mayor for why this is so bad.
If you don't mind, I can start us off, and maybe Alder Watson and possibly Bill could help shore up my memory, too. The concerns that I gathered were related to this very long, kind of skinny driveway, and there were some concerns about that. I think it's shared, maybe. So there was a lot of discussion about that, how it was put in initially. There was some, folks didn't like that driveway specifically, and they were concerned about some of the construction. There was some concern about the wildlife that folks enjoyed there. And I believe that this particular portion of the city, when folks first were living there, we had, we brought it into the city. We annexed it. So there was a little bit of, like, concern over it not being what they had wanted it as, when they bought this property and started living there. I don't know if Alder Watson or maybe Bill Hebert has anything else to share. And if the folks waiting in line to comment don't mind.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, if you look at the, and you look at the packet and the land, it's not, you could probably see it better in your packet than, but the west half, the west half, all this land was annexed into the city from the town of, I think, Texas. And this two acre, almost two-acre piece that they're looking to rezone to a two-flat would just be for two families, not, it's TF10, which may be confused some of the neighbors about 10. It's only going to be a two-family house structure. And at two acres, with the current zoning, it could have been potentially subdivided into five lots, but it didn't have enough street frontage. It's got just a narrow driveway. So they're limited to keep that one property, that's one big chunk of almost two acres. And the owner and seller want to develop a two-flat, so that's the gist of it.
Okay. I don't know, Alder Watson, if you had anything to add. Okay. Then I'm going to move on to the comments. Alder Gisselman.
Yes. Thank you. And I appreciate the Plan Commission, I think, viewing the YouTube video. I think the neighborhood really made a strong case, I think, that the terrain, as well as the fear of what might happen if this does pass, with the possibility, maybe into the future, of requesting a change in the zoning or contingency, I believe that's the word, to enlarge the facility, the building itself. And I think the neighbors, and the terrain itself is very hilly. I mean, it's almost, you go up the terrain, and I just really don't think that this really fits into the neighborhood itself. You're right, it's a very small, one-family neighborhood, and thus I'll be voting against this zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'm astounded at the insensitivity of the committees involved and the people involved when it comes to listening to the people they're supposed to represent. The same, if you recall, the same thing happened to me recently when they wanted to put an aplex in my district, and the neighborhoods came here in full force and narrowly squeaked by. And as the alderman from District 7 said, well, if it were an aplex, it'd be a different story. No, it wouldn't, because she voted for the aplex that was going to go into the neighborhood in my district that got voted down. So I won't be supporting this as well. I believe that the people deserve what they want. They're the long-term residents in this neighborhood, and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Alder McElhany.
My concern with this is what happens if, you know, once we change zoning, whatever the owner today wants to put on it is fine, but we have the next owner. And then there can be a conditional permit coming or conditional request, and then we could add more. That's the problem when you start changing zoning in residential areas. I'm not going to be supporting this because my neighborhood does not want this. I'm usually against NIMBY kind of things, but there are more issues with changing just one piece of property, changing the zoning seems weird to me. And number two is that there are other issues with, like, water issues that could affect people next door. I don't know, I know in my neighborhood, we have huge amount of, we have a very high water table, we have a lot of rock. And if they are putting another house in that area and that raises that water table, you're going to wash out the next neighbor. I deal with that every spring. And in here, it does say that, well, somebody's worried about the water, and then, but the owner isn't and thinks they can handle it. Well, they're not the ones who are going to be living next to it. So I'm going to not support this. I also saw, and maybe I'm incorrect in reading, the way I'm reading this, but I had read that they had asked for a site plan before it came to council, and I did not see that. Did you put it in the packet?
On the back.
On the back. Thanks. But I'm still not supporting it due to those issues. I think, again, it's a slippery slope. You know, why are we doing one piece of land? Somebody put up a garage in my neighborhood, and I still hear about it, because it was given, you know, went through plan. So I just, I just like things to work out the way they're supposed to be, and I worry about, the thing that happens is I get a call saying, okay, what happens to the next guy? And so I won't be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there've been some good points made by my colleagues, particularly in regard to public input and participation. I think that we are here primarily to serve the people and not to rule over them. And when we have received the sentiment of multiple property owners, longstanding owners of the neighborhood, who have expressed significant concerns at public hearings and relevant meetings, and I think that we should heed those sentiments and concerns. And it's a very positive change we've seen in city response this term and at times last term. I think we saw it at our last council meeting, where the body recognized the articulated concerns of citizens and took them into consideration. So I think it's a type of precedent the body can be proud of, and it speaks well of municipal government, that it is here to serve the people, and that service starts and ends with taking into account their articulated opinion. So I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
All right. Alder Herbst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I personally drove up into this neighborhood, and as far as being on 1600 Golf Club Road, that's great. But when you start going up the hill and see all these homes there and all the rocks and all the roads, and all you can think about is the water that's going to come running down these hills onto this flat property, and it's just going to be flooded to no end. I, at the last meeting, I said I would be in favor of a single-family home, but not a duplex or a two-ply, whatever you want to call it. So therefore, I also will not be supporting it this evening. Thank you.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I'm not necessarily concerned about traffic and noise, but I am concerned about runoff. And so, you know, if we're in a situation where we do have a robust amount of rock, which the entire north side has, east and west, and we're looking at issues there with stormwater runoff and where that gets deposited, that could be a serious problem for the people that are downhill from that. Also, with the zoning class that was selected, did I see that that allows for conditional uses for commercial occupancies as well, if someone would want one? Was that a multi-use type situation? Multi-use. So multi-use would allow, oh, multifamily, but not mixed use? Okay. Okay. So I think runoff could be a problem. That neighborhood does have some issues already with those things. So makes sense.
All right. Anyone else? I think we're ready to vote.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I ask, okay. Bill, a question for you. So there's, looks like there's, this is fairly landlocked, except for that narrow script to enter. It looks like there are two structures already up there on the, it's like, the west side of that accessway. Are those, those don't necessarily have any frontage on the road as well, correct?
Correct.
So were those put in by exception, or were those were grandfathered in?
They were developed in the town, and then when they came for sewer and water, we just served them. And initially, the developer wanted to split this And initially, the developer wanted to split this into two lots. We had two single-family lots, but because of our zoning code, they have to have a minimum street frontage. This was the only way to do a two-family or to have two living units on this property.
So this property, as it sits, the property owner cannot subdivide it similar to what you see on the other side of the road?
That's correct.
To put two structures in?
Yeah. And once... if this ever got developed with a two-flat, they couldn't change... they couldn't apply for more.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
You may begin voting. Motion fails 3 to 8.
All right. Thank you. We are moving on now to item... oh, I'm requesting to suspend the rules. 6B filing. Oh. Oh, just kidding. I marked off the wrong one here. 230211, ordinance from Plan, rezoning 4308 North Sixth Street from an urban mixed-use zoning district to a single-family residential zoning district for Lot 2 and urban mixed-use zoning district for Lot 1. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Lukens. Any discussion here or questions? I don't see any.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Now, we're going to move on to suspend the rules. 6B filing. I have a motion by Alder Watson and a second by Alder Rasmussen.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
Thank you. All right. Rules are suspended. First item is item number 141009. It's a resolution from the Finance Committee approving the wireless telecommunication equipment and service agreement with New Cell Phone Inc. from Cellcom. Looks like we have a motion by Alder Rasmussen and a second by Alder Lukens. Okay. I'm not sure if it passed unanimously, but I'm getting the vibe it did. Okay. Is there any discussion? Nope.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All right. Thank you. Next up, it's the addendum item. It's item number 230212. It's a resolution from the Human Resources Committee approving underfilling the deputy assessor position with a property appraiser position. This passed last night at HR unanimously. It looks like I have a motion from Alder Herbst and a second by Alder Watson. I'm not seeing anyone with questions or requests to speak.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 11 to 0.
All righty. Lastly, our last opportunity for public comment and suggestions. If there's anybody that would like to speak, you're welcome to. Okay. With that, I would enter to have a motion by Alder Henke to adjourn and a second by Alder Watson. All in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Get home to your loved ones.